Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting on Wednesday, March 19th, 7:00 PM in the Green Room. If we'll all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, are there any visitors who'd wish to speak? No? Okay. Item number three, approval of minutes. We have both the set from March 5th and March 12th.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Mary. Item number four, appointments. We have four appointments this, tonight in the regular session. And the first, we have Trish Barris, who is hoping to be appointed to Historic District Commission for a term until 6/30/2025. Trish? Hey, welcome. How are you doing? Good. Excellent. Would you like to tell us your interest in applying?
Well, thanks to Peggy, who walked by our historic home probably every day during last summer, we started talking. And she said there was an opening. I'm like, well, this is perfect because not only am I now currently living in Captain James Farnham's home that we restored lovingly, we still need to get the wood outside. Is the house at 69 Waterside that I saved? Yeah, exactly. So it was saved and it was from 1785. We currently also live in a house in Fairfield, or own a house in Fairfield. We live here now. That's from 1812 that we stopped a house next to us from being demolished. So it's been something that's been very near and dear to my heart is keeping these homes. And it's ironic that our home now here in Clinton is not in a historic district, so it's hard to kind of save these. And then the same thing in Fairfield. So I think having people, you know, be the ones that say, hey, wait, let's stop, let's think about this, you know, getting communities together to actually say, well, this is something worth saving, and then helping them do that is really why I thought this was such a great opportunity. So that's, you know, what I want to, want to help. And also, I'm in real estate, so I'm going around in other listings that are older homes. I go and I showcase them and again, help support the new owners that are keeping them and not demolishing them because it's not easy. A lot of times we're like, oh, but I want to put this in and I want a garbage disposal. It's like there's ways of doing it that you can live in a home and keep it the way it was and, and still feel like you have modern conveniences. So it's really important to me to be a part of that. So anything I can do to help?
Any questions for Trish? Is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thanks.
And at your convenience, if you'd go to our town clerk to be sworn in.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for stepping up. Next is Mark Burnow, who is hoping to be appointed to the Inland Wetlands Commission, alternate seat for a term until 6/30/2026. Hey, Mark, how are you doing this evening? Again, would you like to tell us your interest in your professional?
Well, yeah, yeah, I have a science background. I have a bachelor's in geology, a BS in geology. I have 30 years' experience characterizing, investigating contaminated sites, a lot of mill sites and sites that developers want to develop, municipalities. I've done a lot of work for Yale University and their acquisition of properties. And I do have some experience not doing wetland surveys, but I understand the science behind it. I've worked with people that I've sent out to do surveys on, on properties. And, and I, right now, I work for the state, giving out grants for investigating contaminated properties.
Excellent. Questions for Mark? Anyone? No? Is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you very much. Congratulations. And the same, if you would go to the town clerk to be sworn in.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark. Good having you. Number three, Enrique Sotomayor.
Hi. How are you doing?
How are you doing? Enrique would like to be appointed to the Tree Committee for a term until 6/30/2025.
That's only three months. So I'm a 22-year resident of Clinton, put two daughters through the school system here. My background is in biology, graduate degree Harvard, and then doctorate in veterinary medicine. So technically, I'm a veterinarian. I serve as founder and CEO of a biotech company here in Connecticut. And I've been working in conservation for a number of years. I have the second-largest purple martin colony in Clinton, and I manage the colony at the Hammond Asset State Park. So I work a lot with the Minnetoka Autobahn Society.
Excellent. Good to have you. Any questions for Enrique?
Yeah. We got three, like.
Yeah, three. All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. And again, if you'll go see our head clerk. All right. Thank you very much for stepping up. Number four, it is Curtis Gulliford. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Gulliford? Thank you very much. Who is hoping to be appointed to a Public Works Commission seat for a term until 6/30/2028. Hi. How are you doing? So we saw your resume. Thank you. Tell us about yourself and your interest in that particular position.
Yeah, so I've been a Clinton resident for 50 years. I'm also 50 years old, so I was born here. My mom was a teacher for 30-plus years, and then we raised our children here who have been through the, the school system and graduated. I work currently in the trucking industry. I've been in the trucking industry over 15 years. Run a, a business out of North Branford. We have hundreds of pieces of equipment there. So equipment purchase and product purchases that pertain to that equipment are kind of my specialty. We do quite a bit of it. We probably purchase, you know, into the, into the millions every year in, in new equipment, and we do it efficiently. I, I like to think. And I think that I could add that maybe to the commission if that is something they're looking for. I have some expertise there, so. And I want to be part of the town and do something, so it was kind of a good fit for me.
Thank you for stepping up. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And again, if you'll go see Sharon at the town clerk's office.
Got it. Thanks.
Stepping up. Bye-bye. All right. So item number five, the fire truck appropriation.
So, good evening. Everyone got a little chart here. As we were working through the budget process in the CIP, we had discussion on the fire truck options for purchasing it. So we did a little further reading of the charter to find out the guidelines of what we need to go to referendum and for bonding. So we have two options here that the council needs to make a decision on how they'd like to proceed. One would be to bond 900,000. In the CIP, it was for 750,000, I believe. Because it still has to go out to bid, and we're not certain on exactly the amount, the 900,000 would be enough of a cushion for us. If we do need to bond less than that, we only pay interest on what we actually bond. So you can do the resolution and for the 900, but we don't need to. Once we get the bid in, we can do less than that. It could be, the language in it could be up to that. So the process to do that would be discussion for tonight, then it would be an item on April 2nd to move it to a town meeting because the dollar amount, there's a calculation under there. We would just need a town meeting because it is less than 3% of the tax levy for the fiscal year '25. So anything under 1,579,000 would just need a town meeting. Or the second option would be to bond the full amount of the truck. Leave the $930,000, which is in the apparatus fund, which has been accumulated over the last few years. If that truck comes in, if the bid comes in slightly over, the funds can come out of that 930, and then that would also leave a reserve in that account to continue saving towards the next apparatus, which is down the road, I think, in probably the next three to five years. So the process for that would be, again, a discussion this evening. Town council would make the decision on the 2nd to do a bond resolution, but then that would have to move to a referendum. And the question about bonding the 1.6 would go on the May 14th referendum ballot for the budget. So those are the two options. So the council would need to decide. Bob, can answer any questions you may have about our bonding capability for that amount? And it's up to the council to discuss.
Two categories of questions. One would be financial and the other would be administrative. So the financial question is, I think, kind of obvious, but I'll ask it anyway. If, if we bond the additional money, what's the interest rate that we pay on that one? 5%?
Right now, it's probably 4, 3.7.
And when we have that money, we invest it, right? We'll hold it for 40 years and put it somewhere to get a return.
There are specific rules when you, when you actually bond. That's why we hold off until it's bid and everything. So you really have to spend those bond funds pretty quickly, and you can invest them in an investment vehicle over the, the rate that you're paying. So it's arbitrage.
Yeah, you can't do, that's okay. You just answered my question. And then there, there wouldn't be negative arbitrage either.
Right.
So, so you would, you, we would authorize borrowing the money, but we wouldn't actually take the money until we needed it.
Correct.
So if it's four years from now that we get the other 700 grand for the other truck, that's when we would take the money.
Right. The appropriation and the, the bond proceeds budget would stay, stay in the capital project fund until we need it.
But it would allow them to enter in a contract so that they can start the process with the savings and get the trucks starting to be built because it is a long.
The second tranche, we would borrow it and start incurring interest expense until you actually need the truck.
Correct.
Makes sense to me. And then administratively, is it, is it easier or better? I mean, again, just as a town, you, you don't want to be going bonding every $900,000. You'd do larger bonds.
Right.
More or less frequently.
Correct.
So how, how many? This question for you, like, how many trucks do we have? And do you see, like, if you look out 20 years, do you think we need a new truck every three or four years? Is that, I mean, it seems like a lot.
So, Chris, I can speak to that. So we have, the entire plan pushes out every apparatus from, we, we really started refining the numbers in 2019 to get out a long-range plan. The anticipated replacement schedule for each major apparatus is 25 years, when it's calculated. As we spoke on at the last meeting, part of the attempt for this process, not only to improve our operational capability in the north end of town, but to get some longevity for our existing ladder truck and get us into the plan. When we met with Bob and Michelle, it was to try to fit it and make it financially flow better over the next 10 years. Bonding one now and bonding one at the end made it flow a little bit simpler in the middle. Which, what type period are you looking for, for me to answer a specific apparatus?
I'm just looking here, you know, if we, you know, we, we, we bond more, they say they puts us ahead with any future trucks which we'll need in the coming years. So, you know, my question is, in my mind, I was thinking, all right, we get, we get this truck, we, you know, and these trucks are good for 25 years. When, when do we need a new truck? When's the next truck, though?
So historically, the town has financed these in different ways. This would be the first one that's ever actually been bonded. And you discussed the, the process of bonding those based on, over that period of time. The question would rise, I don't think the plan was to bond the next one. The one in the middle would come from the reserve and you would continue that plan. Because what we found, the reserve was working, except the first time we put it into play, and we bought a truck, we bankrupted it. And if we go that same route again and purchase it the same way, we're going to bankrupt it and start at zero again. So it's, it never really gives it that opportunity to build. So the next piece. So you're looking at one between now and the ladder truck in 2030.
And what is the one between that and the ladder truck? What do we need?
Would be an engine downtown the headquarters.
And how much is it, the engine?
It's over a million right now. So the anticipated schedule. And again, these are, you know, rough numbers. You're in the 1.4 to 1.5 range by the time you get there.
So from 2025 to 2030, that's five years. We need three trucks.
Well, you have, this one would be today's, next one several years down the road. And then the plan, if we go forward, would be another separate bond outside of the plan.
So from 25 to 2030, that's five or six years, three trucks.
We're trying, we, we've done our best to spread them out.
So is this just an unusual period of time?
Yeah. So the, the, we ran into the problem, started back in the 80s when they bought twins. We tried to separate them, but we got into hard financial times, as you know, through the 2008 moving forward process. So we extended the life of one, and then we purchased a used truck in 2015 to buy us this 10-year stopgap to try to spread this out.
So we haven't bought a truck in 10 years, and the last one we bought?
Well, one, if you count technically, two. One on the plan and one when you did the, you did the used process, so.
In 2015?
Yeah.
So from 15 to 25?
The idea was to run that for 10 years to get us to where we are. But with COVID, it, from going from, you know, 16 months to getting a new truck to 24 to 36, we're now at that point where we're going to be at the 10-year mark. We haven't even placed the order. Now we're going to be going into the 12-year cycle for that vehicle that we didn't anticipate the last this fall.
And the price of the trucks went where?
It's still going up. Honestly, we can't, we'll never be able to recover from that, that COVID-type period where we saw that 25% jump in just over a year. I mean, nobody could plan for that. And the market has, has not truly stabilized. It's on, it's, it's percentages are back to its, its, it used to be like the 3.5 range. You're looking at about 5% a year, roughly, and that's the escalator that we used in the plan to try to project this out before we go and bond.
So, so the, so basically, to answer my, my question, so if we bonded the 1.6, we would get the fire truck now, we'd leave the 930 in there, add to that over a couple years and be able to pay for it, the next one without bonding.
Bond again? And then after that, how, how long before we need another truck?
You're looking between 2033 and 2035, and then you're out to 2038 beyond that. No offense, but hopefully that's not in any of our purview to have to manage.
But the, the idea, the thought is that it gives you some time to build the reserve so you don't have to bond. We get out of this bonding.
And that's, that's where the, the, the plan worked well if you bonded, or excuse me, if you put a nest egg in to begin with. We were starting at ground zero in 2020. So we've gotten to this point where we have a good number. If we can, we've run a couple of different scenarios with Bob and Michelle to figure out what that fixed number would be to float this plan. I think we kind of landed around 500,000, roughly, and it would carry this all the way through and not put us in a deficit until well into the 2030s.
What do you think?
Truth of the matter is, back in 2020, when we started that fund, where you think we're going, we thought we could keep up with the price of the truck. Unfortunately, the price of trucks just went off the table. So if you run on the truth, I don't think you'll ever be able to pay for a truck outright. Because by the time we build, how much do you think we can build that thing up in three years for 900,000? How much are you willing to put in out of whatever people's pocketbook? A lot of, we don't have it undesignated anymore, spending. So, quite frankly, we'll never pay for a truck. Because by the time we get to that truck in three years, it's going to be well over 930,000. Probably be the same thing, 1.6 million. If we're lucky.
But if we put, if we put 400,000?
What I'm trying to say is this. In the, in the short form of, is it, we're always going to be bonding these trucks. Because there's no other money that we have left in this town other than bonding now because we only have, I think, if I look at my arithmetic correctly, right now, in excess of the, of the 20% that we could spend right now, we only have $1,184,000. Is that right? So, you know, when we chopped up that $4 million excess of the last couple of years, trying to be nice guys and saving people all this tax money, you blew and undesigned it that now, we're, we're in a rough spot. So you can dream all you want about, well, we'll catch up with the 930 and all this. That's gone. You'll never catch up to the price of those fire trucks. Some of these towns are paying $2 million already for fire trucks.
But it, but what they're?
Talk to Deep River, talk to some of these towns, so.
But what they're saying?
You might as well get used to bonding a fire truck. And every three to five years, Chris, you're going to come, come here, or somebody's going to come here, some town council, and bond. So we might as well get used to that right now. So, I mean, for me, my money, you might as well start the ball rolling now and bond the whole thing for 1.6. Unless somebody else, Chris, you're pretty sharp on this, and Mike, you are, but you might as well just face facts.
Well, listen, I hate bonding. I think it's crazy, but listen, it's the, it's what you need to do in order to make things work. So, I mean, it's, I guess, going out at 1.6 now, you know, ultimately, it's going to have an impact on taxpayers. So I mean, I think it's, in a way, good that the taxpayers will be going to referendum and let them vote on it.
Yeah.
Because then they're going to understand what's going to happen because ultimately, 1.6 bond's going to have a debt service payment, it's going to have an effect on our baseline taxes, and it's going to have an effect on that. So for me personally, if we're going, if we're going to bond, bond 1.6, let the people speak, let the people vote, let the people decide if that's the way to go. And then I like the fact that we're keeping the 930 there. And again, whether, whether, how we plan strategically going forward, even if we put 200, 300, whatever amount we put into that account going forward, the next one, we don't necessarily have to bond the full amount. You could pay for an apparatus and/or bond less, so it's still money that we can use as a town to put towards the apparatus of, of any future purchases which we know we're going to have. I mean, yeah, the prices are going to go up, but I mean, even if we put 200 for the next three years, that's another 600, or 1.5. And then if the, the apparatus is whatever it is at that point, I mean, you can kind of break it up too, knowing that you're going to have 2, 27, 2030, break it up and put 500 or 500, or whatever it may be. It just gives you more flexibility. So, yeah, I mean, I think that's probably the smartest way to go.
At the point, I agree with you, Chris, because of the fact that at least now, it's going to give us some time. We now know that we are in sort of a, like a pickle, and we better start thinking about constructive, building that fund up if we can, or some other matter. This, this is buying us time. What do you think, Mike?
Yeah, so, so Brian, the lifespan of the truck's 25 years. We don't pay on the note or on the bond until it's actually completed, which, what's the expected delivery time?
Absolute best-case scenario would be 24 months. You're looking closer to 36.
Two years. It's almost three years. Probably three years that, the time we get there. I like the idea of leaving the 930 in there, and we're going to, we're going to have to bond. At some point, the life cycle of the vehicle is 25 years. I think it fits the, the picture of your replacement plan. And, yeah, I mean, we're going to have to continually reevaluate the best way to do things, but I think bonding the full amount right now is the best way.
I'd like to, I would like to bring up one thing, and that is the library. I, I'd like to interject that project. What is the appetite of the public to bond 1.6 million in May? And then November? It's not too different. It's all, it's, it's the same pot of money.
Well, no, but it's, it's not on our agenda, so I mean, to kind of just throw it there now.
No, but it's a point of whether it's nine or 1.6.
They won't be bonded at the same time.
They wouldn't be bonded at the same?
No, no, it wouldn't be bonded at the same time, but with 1.6 already bonded, public coming out in November, it's an issue that I want to bring up.
Well, we're going to, part of my?
This is why the people?
There is going to be a library presentation so that everyone, so the town council can see the project that's being proposed and see if it's something that you support. And then based on that, we'll have another discussion with the payment options and what the timeline looks for that project completion, and then there would be a decision being made. And Bob can probably find out, do a little bit of plotting on the forecast on what we would have if we're not going to end up going to bond maybe for another year, and the decisions made from about the library as well, what that number would be, what that debt service would look like, and when it would be due, if, you know, 24 months, how much is due for the truck, and where we would be.
And another question, this does have to pass the referendum. Is 1.6 likely to pass?
Yeah.
There'll be three questions. I mean, there'll be two.
It's going to be, it would be three questions.
Three questions. The board of ed, town, and then the third question would be, would you like to bond the fire department? So hopefully, we would want all three to pass, but no problem. People could, as you know, defeat any one of the three. But it would be a separate defeat for whatever one that didn't go.
I understand.
The political question is if it's 900,000, is there a better chance it passes than if it's 1,600,000?
We're supposed to go to 900,000. We do it ourselves at a town meeting.
You do it at a town meeting. It doesn't go to a referendum.
Which I think?
That would pass. That would pass.
It's a lot easier if you wouldn't go to a referendum.
Yeah.
But you, but, but again, don't forget, then you're going to have everybody in the town, it's going to be complaining, why didn't they have a chance to vote?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that, that transparency is important.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like half of it got snuck through at a, a town meeting where only people, you know, 10 people or the right amount of people, special interests. And I think seeing town meetings over the last, you know, couple of times we've done them for special interest things, the, the entire town of Clinton gets to say yes or no that this is the right direction for us to go.
So we're, so you're making the point, it's, it's best to go to referendum and let the taxpayers choose. I'm with you. And then if you go to them, what's the minimum you go to them for? A million?
Well, no, if you would do?
A percentage of your?
Not a percentage of your tax levy. So 1,579,280. We would bond the recommended.
So we're pretty close to the minimum.
Recommendation would be 1.6. Then if the bid comes in higher, we can use, pull from that 930,000 to offset that.
And then, and then the next truck would be in a couple of years, and we have enough money, pretty close to enough money for it. And then the next truck would be in 2030 or '31, and we'll bond that one. And we could start reserving for the 2035 truck. Now, we got 10 years to build up enough money, and maybe we can get out of bonding fire trucks by 2035.
Well, yeah. I mean, that's what our intent was back in 2020, Hank, as you know, if you remember, you know. That was the idea until. A lot of things happen.
Makes sense.
Everybody?
So we're all in agreement that we're going to do the 1.6?
Yes.
Okay.
You need a rest, you need a vote on that? No?
No.
Okay.
So we will work, so now at the April 2nd meeting, there'll be an agenda item to approve a bond resolution for that amount. Bob will get the resolution, and then it'll be added to the May 14th ballot.
All right. Item number six, the town beach update. Beau is here. Okay, Beau?
This project goes back to when we had a basketball hoop.
This project goes back to when we had a basketball hoop situated in the edge of a parking lot. It's the first parking lot I actually came in. It was just a basketball hoop. And when we received grant money, I went to the commission, and I said I had a big concern. I think I came to town council and also said I have a concern of the safety issue of that being in a parking lot, cars coming in and out. So we decided to dismantle that hoop and relocate it. And the area that we wanted to relocate it is now over by the bocce court area. Okay? Now, keep in mind, this is not a basketball court regulation by no means, okay? What we're trying to do is replace a basketball hoop, so that people go down and shoot hoop like they did before, okay? And we want to locate this, and we have plans for it. They've been approved. We have permits. They have been approved as well, okay, going forward. This is strictly an update for the town council. And the money is being spent out of the grant that we received from the beach. We had two grants. We had original one of 55,000, and then we had another one, most recently, of 250,000. Quick update on that, there goes 305. Out of the first grant, we spent 22,000 on a project to renovate and upgrade the large pavilion at the beach, which has been completed. So that brought us down. Now, with the monies left from the original grant and the second grant, we have approximately 283,000 dollars to do this project. So what we want to try to do now, we came up with a plan, and like I said, we, we have a complete detailed plan of this area, which will include a basketball area, which will have two hoops. There will be a hoop at regulation heights at 10 feet. There will be another hoop off to the side of that, eight feet, for younger kids to shoot. We also have a play area, which would be closer to the edge of the parking lot within this facility. So what we're trying to achieve here is to give a basketball shooting area like we had previously, okay? This will be probably a little bit better in blue, that it will be more protective. It will be covered on four sides by fencing. People ask me about the fencing. It'll be a vinyl, black vinyl fencing, which would house this entire area. So what we want to try to do with this is probably have a half-court area, which would give us a foul shooting line, okay, at the 10-foot-high hoop, and then off to the side would be an eight-foot-high hoop for them to shoot. So we would have two hoops down there, okay, within this area. And like I said, we already have a completed plan, okay, which is designated. And keep in mind, a half-court is usually 30 by 30 feet, and that's, we would get out of the area that we're proposing. High school regulation court is 84 by 50, and MBA and college is 50 by 94 feet. So there's no way we can reiterate putting a complete basketball court there. That was never the intent. The intent was try to move when we took the, put the pickleball courts in where the basketball court area used to be at Indian River. It was intent to bring down two hoops and put in this area. So I think it's a win-win situation. Number one, we gained eight parking spots. It's a safer, it'll be a safer zone. We're using grant money to provide this facility at the town beach for the community.
Bob?
Yeah.
I hear you say we're also going to put a sort of playground or playground.
Yeah, like a four-square hopscotch. That would be on, within that area.
May I ask why?
Well, it's a play area. It's not, it's not.
Well, we have the regular big, we get a big play area there with swings and.
Correct, yeah.
And, I mean.
Danny, that's the playground.
Yeah.
The, what he's talking about is a layout where the kids can have another competition other than basketball. They could play the four-square. It's another game that they can play with the ball. And the hopscotch is just another thing that they can do. It's a recreation area.
I mean, if you see it's in your plans, it's fine, but I just thought that's sort of redundant that we have a beautiful, huge playground here, and now we're putting a hopscotch or something over here.
If you look at the shape of that area that we're able to use, we can't really put a full court in there.
No, I understand that. I'm not trying to get a full court.
So we're utilizing it, so we're utilizing it. I mean, it's just a.
By no means, I know you can't put a, a full court in there. I just, just wondering.
Yeah, it's just, it's just something else, it's just something else to, for the kids to do.
Is this where, I mean, just because I'm there three times a day? Oh, no. Okay.
Good, Hank, you asked a question.
Yeah, what's there now? That, that area where the hopscotch, that, that paved area, is that grass there now?
Oh, it's sand.
Sand, yeah.
There's a bocce court. A leftover bocce court, yeah.
So essentially, essentially, you're, you're essentially making the basketball court that, in the plans, more multifunctional, based on other things being.
It would provide more activity for.
There's no hopscotch down there now.
Yeah. It'll be eight feet.
And does it have slats so the wind could blow through it?
Oh, yeah, it would be a chain-link fence going around it, yeah, black vinyl. Yeah, pickleball.
So is that, is that project, that whole project with everything involved, that would use up the rest of the money that is left between the two grants?
No, no. We, we had the two, Chris, as I explained. We had 55,000, okay? We have 283. We already met the bid with this. We had two, we received two bids back. One was at 60,000, another one was at 70, okay? So obviously, we went with the 60,000 dollar one, and we were able to have the contract to hold that bid, okay? The only increase would be, would be, because it's almost a year later, would be the increase in asphalt. And you know what's going to be, that would be a change order. We would still have the money within the budget from the grant money to provide for that.
So there'll be extra money that you can use for something.
We have, when we, when we went for the 250, we had to put in a scope of work, and there was eight different items. We had the basketball play area, which we're talking about right now. We had a booster pump. We had drainage at the splash pad. We had to renovate the old bathhouse and upgrade those. We had playground expansion, which would be another playscape unit, similar to what we have down there. We have a nice area. I took out two or three different apparatuses down there, so we have area to put another unit in there. And then also, I've been working with our town planner. We do have an erosion concern down at the town beach. We want to address the erosion with some of that money as well. So that's where we are with all the money. So it's not just one thing, Chris. It's a number of things we're trying.
Are, is the, is the commission still entertaining an idea to put a basketball court somewhere else, like at Elliott or?
Since then, it's us, we, we have been looking at several locations. I've been working with Michelle. I do have a couple of suggestions that's coming up that we want to look at, okay? That's a matter of me getting together and looking at these sites and determining whether or not it's feasible to, to put an area, basketball area in there like we had up at the Indian River, Chris. So we have, we've been actively pursuing other areas for that, to replace what was up at Indian River, to answer your question, yes.
But these funds are designated for the beach area. So that would be, if there was a plan for a different location for basketball, it would be a separate funding source that would need, be needed.
Yeah, I understand.
In your project plan, is there a timeline for the basketball court at the beach?
At the beach?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm ready to get started on it right now. I just need approval.
We need the contract signed and.
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
And then we'll.
Right away. We're ready to start. Yeah, we'd like to do it right now, okay, before the beach opens officially, because that was a good time. I know we're tearing up waterside lane, but I still understood that there, that we'd be able to have access to the beach for construction down there as well.
Thank you, Beau.
Thank you, Beau, for the update.
Item number seven, line item transfers. We have, I'll start with public works. 27,099 out of contingency to cover both overtime, snow and ice, and snow plowing and sandy. So that, again, the total is 27,099.72.
We didn't have a lot of snow plowing this year, did we?
They have to come out, even if it's just a dusting. I mean, they do have responsibility to come out.
The other item is from finance, out of contingency, 4,922.50, which would cover probate court and the estuary council.
I keep asking this, Bob, but how much is left in contingency? It's got to be.
So before these transfers, 36,000, and these are, these fit.
Yeah. In June, we got about 5,000, 2,000.
June, we got three months to go.
Now in June.
Yeah.
38.
All right.
Do we do separate motions, Mary? Separate motions, okay, all right. Any question? Well, we can discuss. So is there a motion to take 27,099.72 out of contingency to cover the public works? Yes.
Go ahead, you go.
Okay, second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, that motion carries. And then 4,922.50 out of contingency to cover the probate court for 89.50 and the estuary council for 4,833, under the finance department motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
What is this, what's 89.50 to the probate court?
I think it's just.
It's, the, the payment that we make to a probate court, the, the invoice came in after last year's budget process.
Well, like, but what's the invoice for?
We, we pay, there's a regional probate court, and we.
Right, no, I know that, but I mean, it just seems like 89, 89.50?
The invoice came in slightly over than what they must have given us for the budget process for the.
Yeah, it's basically one payment, and their, and their request was 89 more.
That was for 23, 24 to 25.
Correct.
Because we already put it in our budget for this year.
Right, so they sent us, they gave us an invoice, they must have sent it out.
So we, we have the amount.
Right. Okay.
So is there a motion?
Yeah, me.
Is it? Are we discussing now? Okay. On paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, so on to financial report, Bob.
Yes, good evening. Enclosed, as usual, is the revenue and expenditure statements for the, this year's budget. Nothing notable there. The forecast, for the most part, stays the same as, as the prior month. On the investments, February, the interest rates remain stable. If you go to page 12, the only notable item on, on the, the investment sheet, you'll notice that in, in, in the month of February, the stiff amount actually went up 10 million, usually, and that represents tax proceeds. Usually, we used to put it into Bank of America. I thought it was wise, and I think I, I informed the town council that we were going to put the more money into stiff because you have one more, one percentage.
Higher interest rate, yeah.
Yeah, so even though interest rates are going down, putting the money in stiff will, will keep our interest rate forecast in line.
What's the interest rate in that stiff?
It was 4.46, but yesterday it was 4.41.
Go ahead, jump to, just like that.
Another thing of note is on page 13, general fund balance, and, and it's been mentioned tonight, the only difference with this statement is we did insert an assigned amount, because that assigned amount is what is in the current requested budget for 25, 26. It brings, the forecast brings our unassigned fund balance to 22% of total budget, and we know our, our policy is we, we don't want it to go beyond 20%. So as mentioned, the difference between the 22% and the 20% will be, is a, a little bit above a million dollars.
And, and when the budget goes up next year, that'll probably disappear.
Yeah, so we know that's a challenge. We, we recognize it's a challenge for the budget year afterwards, and we're going to have to start working on that challenge way before the budget season starts next, this October. So we're going to start looking at that and strategies. If we're lucky, increase in, in grand list will help us as we transfer what we've been doing, financing capital items through fund balance, shifting it into, hopefully, new tax, which is increasing grand list. So that's our challenge in the, in the very, very, very near future. And I think that, that's, that's it on the report. Oh, the only other, I'm sorry, the, under the general comments, we did put out an RFP for auditors. We got two responses. Kind of expected it. Most audit firms are at capacity, so we'll be looking at those two RFPs within, within the next week and reporting back.
Have we changed auditors in the last few years?
I think it's, I think the last contract was for four years. We extended it, so five. Strange thing, and it happened to a lot of towns, it happened in Newtown, during COVID, audit firms were at capacity. The clients they had were the clients they kept, and they didn't go out to RFP. Usually, you'd get four or five. We got, we got two, which is been, what's been happening.
These are current auditor, PF, O'Connell, they, were they one of the bits?
They were one of the bits, yes.
So we're going to meet, that was part of our report, we're going to meet with the board of ed as well to review them.
I like your table over there, Bob. I like your table.
I had a choi, yeah, I had a choice between Hank and Mike, and I.
Sorry, Mike.
Next, we're going to get a nameplate and official.
All right, if there are no questions, then we'll go on to the town manager's report.
Okay, so Bob already discussed that we had the two RFPs and the bids came in, so we'll be working on that, and we can report who we go with. The legal notice, which you've all received a copy, has been drafted. This will be published, and I provided everyone a copy for your review. We are in the process of nailing down a date for the WPCC workshop. I received questions from the council members. Those have gone on to the WPCC members, and they are working on getting your answers to those questions. Mary will be reaching out probably in the next week or so to try to get some May dates. The calendar's filling up very quickly. Thursday, this past Thursday, I held my second meet and greet at the library, and we had probably a little over 30 people in attendance. It was very well-attended. It was very informative and very interactive. I'm going to be planning another event in May or June. It's going to be called Community Happenings Chat with myself and Abby. A lot of the questions, or many of the questions, were from residents asking about specific locations, on, you know, what is going to be built there, some zoning processes on applications, some blight questions, and just status of some of the developments that they've heard about in the news, and, you know, where their application stands. So it, I think, will be very interactive if we can have Abby join me, and she can answer those questions. So we're excited about that. So we'll, once we get a date, we will advertise it and hopefully have a larger turnout. I mentioned earlier, we are finalizing a date right now. It looks like May, Thursday, May 1st would be the date for the library workshop, and we just need to talk to Mary Beth. And they will present the proposed renovations and improvements to the library, and then the council will then proceed with a similar process of reviewing payment options or funding sources as we do with the fire truck. The annual report is complete, and I would like to give a special thanks to local artist Lorena Yurgowitz, I apologize if I didn't say it correctly, for her artwork that graces the cover of our report. We have copies of this available, so if you'd like. We have copies of this available, so if you'd like one, Mary would be more than happy to provide you when we have them up in the office. Two new kayak racks are being installed at Esposito Beach. This is part of the Marina improvements that were funded through ARPA with the council's support. There will now be three racks for residents to rent, and the park and rec application process starts on April first, and there's a very high demand for these racks. So this is definitely gonna be a welcome improvement to the kayaking community here in Clinton. If you drove by Town Hall, you've noticed that there is a bucket truck. There is some construction taking place. They are actively working on repairing the roof, and the pipe, which caused the water damage, came all the way through the mason room and down into our copy room. So they are fixing that. It took some time because the pipe had to be custom-made. And once that repair is done to the roof, they will then move and do the interior repairs. Public Works will be doing that. I wanted to provide a brief update on some townwide projects. I'm gonna have Abby come in, I think, April meeting. I gotta see what her schedule's like to do a little more in-depth on the status of the projects. But now that spring's happening, a lot of projects are starting back up, and you're gonna see some activity, so I wanted to make sure everyone's aware. The East Main Street sidewalk, under construction. It's narrowing, narrowing, narrowing Meadow Road and is close to completion. They obviously had to stop during the cold winter months. West Main Street sidewalks, the eighty-twenty state and local cost. The town council approved the scope of the expansion to include both north and south sides of Route One, and authorized myself to move forward with negotiations and necessary contracts to advance the project to thirty percent design. Negotiations are underway, and once the contract is in place, design work, including surveying, will begin. And the north side has already been committed to complete from the, by the council. Beach Park, tide gate replacement. This project is being managed by Ducks Unlimited and does not require any town, town funding for construction. There's limited town funds available in the Public Works budget, which will be used to assign a consulting town engineer to inspect the project during construction. That is a requirement on the town side. The contractor is responsible for the signage and outreach. As details and the schedules concerning traffic interruptions are available, the town will assist in sharing the information with residents in the area and public in general. Public Works is, has a dedicated page on their website for project updates, and signs will be posted along the road to warn people about construction and detours coming this spring. We got our inspections back on our bridges, and there's three bridge projects planned over the next two to three years. These projects are a hundred percent reimbursable. Country Village Lane is in the design and permitting phase. Its general information session will be held, was held, I'm sorry, in February to introduce the project to the residents. Ben Merrill Road is in the design phase, and Waterside Lane is in the preliminary design. A public information session will be decided, a date should be decided to discuss design options for the bridge, and we will solicit the public for feedback on that. This meeting is not scheduled yet, but we're looking at dates in April. And that is my report.
The WPCC meeting, we had sent our questions to them. Were there questions coming back to us?
Um, I didn't get any questions back from them. I did offer to, I will reach out to them again and just see if they have any that they have for us. I think they're looking more for an open table, a roundtable forum, where it'll be a back-and-forth conversation. So they may have some questions that they present that evening that they don't present ahead of time, but I will request that they do if they have some in mind.
Thank you. Mine is just a short report. I did join Michelle, as did Brian, at the library. And it's fair to say that eighty-five percent of the questions involved, the residents asking questions involved downtown improvements, whether it was blight, whether it was filling buildings that are empty, specific names of buildings that have been empty for years and years. And so I look forward to getting back to that conversation about downtown, hearing what EDC is doing, hearing what Dale Group is coming up with. So once the budget is over, we can move on to that. Because I know that the majority of our residents want, want to see that happen, want to see these businesses fill in. Liaison report? No, I'm sorry. Council discussion, anyone? Yes?
Uh, I have a question about the landfill project. How is that coming?
So the landfill project, we're still moving forward. They have a little, the, D-Paz requested some information about, which ties into a conversation I'm gonna have with you in a little bit. Back in nineteen ninety, there was an order placed on the town from the landfill for two properties in the vicinity that didn't have drinkable water. So it's come up on their radar, so we just have to address that, show that we have rectified that situation. We provide these individuals with water per this consent decree, and we sent that off to them today. So we should be wrapping up. It is taking much longer than they anticipated, but we are in constant communication with them.
My second one is the, uh, the Morgan School, whatever you wanna call it, refund or rebate or some, the money that-
It's rescheduled. Uh, the audit's rescheduled for May.
May, May?
So we'll know more. It was originally scheduled, I think, for one of the days of our workshops, and it was just too much.
My last one is, I know sometime along, we've got so many workshops, I know I remember somebody saying that we were gonna have a workshop about the role of the council, or something like that, in the future.
Well, we did. So we had, we had the ethics, and we had that training with the attorney on town council and the roles and code of ethics and all of that.
Also, that counted towards that?
That count, but if you'd like, if you'd like something-
All right, no, no, no. Well, I'm just making a suggestion.
You talked about Robert's rules and the process of, of order.
I would like to, I don't know if we have to have a complete night workshop. Maybe these two guys will punch me or something, but I really would like to have a workshop, I guess, and have a discussion about the char-, our charter. I'd like, I think it's, behooves us to sit down as a council, have a charter in front of us, and let's go down and make sure that we all understand how this charter works.
Okay.
I think, you know, we're, sometimes, I hear too, too often, what? We think it's in the charter, or we'll check the charter, or buh, 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 buh. It'd be nice if renewal is in the charter.
Understood.
And-
And you're on the code of ethics, and we have that date set for that kickoff meeting.
Right.
So we can also talk about that with Jeff DiNofrio, about the charter process, you know, revision process, what that looks like. And he can give us some guidance on looking at reviewing the charter and seeing if things could be clearer, if there's certain areas that need updating. And then you and Mike, who are on that, in that little subcommittee, can also report to the council back and say this, you know, this is a strategy to, to tackle it.
I got you. I'm, I'm not looking for clarification from a lawyer. I just think we all should just read it and go to it. Most of it is self-explanatory, but there are some little things that I remember through the course of this past six or eight months where we've sort of been fuzzy about, is that in the charter, or, you know? So it's time to maybe brush up on it, and I guess because when we make statements to the public, we should know what we're talking about. When we say this is in the charter or it isn't in the charter, bingo. It is or it isn't. Not that well. Well, check this out and see in a couple of monies or something, you know? It's, we should be talking a little bit more definitive to the public. Thank you. I'm, I'm all done. Thank you.
Any other discussion? So liaison reports, any of those?
Yeah, I got that, they do. I won't try to fake it out. I missed the meeting because I had another thing to do, but I did take their minutes. I guess the things that really pop up that we should be aware of is that Sergeant Popovich is planning to retire, and probably by the end of this month, from what the minutes. So again, that's gonna put a little additional hardship on the police department till we start the hiring process, but again, there'll be one man down, and they've been, as we know, fighting the overtime for the last sixty-eight months because of a couple of sicknesses and a couple of vacancies. Also, I read here that the radio project is progressing ahead of schedule. That's good news. That's a town radio system that covers for Public Works, Fire, and Police. That big radio project, it's probably in the neighborhood of, what, Chris, three, four million dollars?
I think it's just under three, uh, under four, I'm sorry. I think it's like, yeah, it's about four point, three point eight or something.
And again, I'd like to plug to the town that, you know, because of careful getting grants and things like that, it came into the town at a very minimal cost. If it was a million dollars out in the town's pocket, that's a lot. I wanna say it's probably five, six hundred thousand. So I think that was a good job there, and that should be done. Also, I should read here that the, I don't think we remember well that back about four or five months ago, there was a small grant allowed to the police department to get these, what they call flock cameras. They just put them up in areas. From what I read here, that it has been very successful in assisting in the shoplifting investigation and arrest. So I think that's a good point. And finally, forty boxes of prescription drugs were taken in that drug takeback that the police held last month. So it's forty boxes of drugs that possibly can't get in the wrong hands. So I think things are going well over at the PD. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? All right, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Are we gonna go into executive and then out and then in again?
Yes.
Could we do it, that, we do both of?
We have multiple matters.
Well, just because we didn't want the people to have to wait for, yeah.
So is there a motion to go in? All right, second?
Aye.
Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Someone willing to make an motion?
Sure, two, two great candidates. You made it tough for us. But I make a motion for Ken Skidmore.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you both.
Thank you both, yeah, very much.
Remind me of your turn.
Excellent, okay. And Ken, you've heard me before, the town clerk swears you in at your convenience. So between the hours of nine and five?
Nine and four.
All right, nine and four.
And you do need to do that before you attend the meeting.
Yes.
So between nine and four, and do we know when the next meeting is by any chance?
They're the first Tuesday of the month, so.
By April.
Yeah, so, yeah.
All right. Okay, all right. Thank you both very much. Thank you both. Bye-bye. So is there a motion to go into executive session? Second?
You want me to wait, I can add to the next.
All in favor? Yeah, that's next. Okay, all right, yep. We're going back in. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you, thank you.